All right. Thank you, Megan. Why don't we start by doing attendance? Steve Brown?
Present.
Carolyn Coffey.
Here.
Blaine Breslow.
Here.
Catherine O'Callaghan.
Here.
Mary Lou Lawrence.
Here.
And Sarah Peace is here. Can we hear you yet, Sarah? All right, not yet. So we'll assume she's still working on that. Can you unmute her?
Do we need somebody to take notes? I don't see the phone lines on. Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you for reminding me though. Catherine, I have something that I can ask to unmute, so I can force people to be muted, but I can't force them to unmute.
Oh, okay. They can't be compelled to speak, I guess.
So Sarah, if you can hear us, maybe you can log off and then try to get back in? Would that work?
And Megan, could you activate the chat feature and then we could send her a chat?
Well, she can raise her hand, too.
Hi.
Oh, she logged off.
Okay, so maybe she.
Yeah, I think it's just the Q and A.
Yeah, I don't think I can do chat because it's open meeting and so it's set up a little bit differently.
Sure.
Okay, but there's still a hand raised, so if we needed to vote on something, she could raise her hand if we can't hear her. Or we could see her raise her hand, too, if she can get the video back on.
But can she hear us?
I think she can.
Sarah, can you raise your hand?
She's not on now. She's logging, she logged off to log back on.
She started talking in response to a question from Carolyn, so we just, and that's, I think that was how we figured it out, right? So she must have been able to hear. All right, well, there are enough of us, there are five of us, six, right? So why don't we just go ahead and they'll join in hopefully as they come in. Did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions, changes, additions?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed to approve any minutes? Okay, minutes are approved from February. Okay, so Megan.
Thank you. Let's see, just make sure. Okay, can everybody hear me? I'm not muted.
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, good. All right. So we had a wonderful first of March. We finally were able to have in-person programming. So on March 1st, we had Mama Steph come. We had 70 people come to our first Mama Steph that we've had since probably the summer or late fall. But we welcomed her back. We were very excited. We had it in the West Wing and we had 70 people attend. And then the following day, so on March 1st, the COAS support board of health met to discuss the mask mandate. And we are no longer mandated to wear masks in our public municipal buildings, so we're calling it Max Mask Flexible. So if you want to wear a mask, great. If you don't want to, you don't have to. And adding on to this, I know Governor Baker pushed forward the ability to have virtual open meetings until July 15th. So I don't have answers as to what that means for our meetings, but I do know that we are allowed to meet in this format until July 15th. I just wanted to give a little rah rah to our circulation team. They have been coming up with some really great suggestions and getting excited about making just some small changes around the library. But I feel like they're really feeling empowered and they're excited to update things. So one of the things they request asked if they could put the couches together and put the high tables behind the couches for book displays, because they were seeing that people weren't really sitting at those seats with the round tables in front of them. So they asked if they could make a change, a little experiment to see if maybe that would attract some more people to that seating. And in fact, we've seen a lot more people go and sit in that area. So the configuration seems to be a nice fit for that area, and it was great that we purchased furniture that we could do different things like that. And they're also working on some signage around the library, just updating it with some of our brand colors and lightening it up a little bit, so it's a little bit easier to read. So I'm excited for them and I'm excited for that team. And I'm proud that they feel as though they can start, you know, asking about making some changes, some improvements.
I think it looks great. It just opens up the space. And the last time I was in, there weren't books on those tables, the round tables yet, and that looks great, too.
It does. Yeah, I love it. I sat there.
Good, good. When they said it to me, it was like a light bulb went off. They're like, so can we, you know, do you think that we could move this and make it a little bit cozier space? And, you know, they're absolutely right, that people tend to head back to the back of the library or to the larger tables for more of quiet space. And maybe, you know, right in front of the circ desk or the entrance is not where people seek the quiet study space. So this is a perfect, it's worked out really well.
It's very inviting, yeah.
We have a new partnership with Elder Fairs. So they have two social workers that work in their building, Stephanie Saunders and Samantha Joyce, who is an intern. And their grant was extended, so they approached me to talk about how they could partner with the library. And so one thing that we talked about is sometimes when there's programs at Wilka Commons, people who are not seniors don't feel as though they can join that program or there's a reluctance to do so. And especially with social work, it's so important that people have access. So they'll now be doing office hours in the library in the historical room, and it's going to be every second and fourth Thursday of the month. And it's just going to be a drop-in for now, so that people have access to services they might need. I wanted to revisit the land survey quote. So as we've progressed in our process to build an outdoor space and we've entertained three landscape architects, it's become pretty clear to myself and I believe the building, the outdoor space committee, I don't think we've formally named ourselves, but that this land survey is necessary. So I wanted to come back to the board and have a discussion about possibly having that done.
The one thing that we've talked about a little bit, that I just want, you know, I think is worth exploring is sharing. The Open Space Committee slash Engineering were really excited about the idea of us doing a survey because they want the information. So I feel like it's worth asking, you know, it's $5,000, you know, maybe they have $2,000 to contribute to it. You know, that's $2,000 we can spend on plants or something for our outdoor space if we can get them to share it. So, you know, worst that happens is they say no. So that would be the one thing that we suggest. But I do think that we should engage Cavanaro and get started. You're mute, Catherine.
Steve, did you want to say something?
What? Yeah, I just wanted to, since we've been talking about that area next to Sawyer, whereas Cavanaro was going to survey the absolute entire property. Maybe Carolyn, you can explain further what Open Space wanted and why.
I don't know. Maybe Megan knows.
Survey the entire space.
Steve, so if I can remember back to the conversation, it was an interest in the space, the open space next to the basketball. And I think there's been some different ideas thrown out from them about what that space could be used for. I don't think that they ever settled on using that space or moving forward with it. So, you know, the last conversations I had with Town Hall about the survey were back in the beginning of October. So, you know, their need for this survey might have changed. I can do some research on that and reach out to Michelle Leary and just see, you know, do they, you know, is this something that they'd like to partner on? Is this something that they still need? Are they still entertaining ideas for that space? They might have moved on completely because I know it wasn't favorable to all departments to have something built in that area. So, but I'm happy to have the conversation for sure. And I, you know, I agree, if they want, if they're interested in the survey, then, you know, they should be able to chip in a little bit.
But you don't know what they were going to do with it.
No, there was a few ideas floated, Mary Lou, about what that space would be for. I know one of them was a pickleball court at one time, but I think, again, they were just ideas. And I don't think any, I haven't heard of anything that was actually moving forward for that space.
Carolyn?
Steve raises a good question, which might be worth seeing, but the answer is if Cavanaro just surveyed the corner of the property that we're thinking about building on, would that affect the cost? You know.
It better.
I have to imagine that it would, because they wouldn't have to do the wetlands research and all that kind of stuff. I imagine there's a certain amount of fixed cost to bring the people out there and set up and all that kind of stuff. And it doesn't really matter the size of the survey for that. But if Open Space doesn't want to share and we can reap a little bit of savings by cutting down the scope of the project, that might be worth doing. And actually, that might be the way to position it with Town Hall, like, we're only going to do this small amount. So if you want the whole thing done, find some money.
That's what I, those are one of two things I was going to say. One of my concerns from when we first broached the topic of the survey was that if we make it too expansive, then do we really want other parties having a say in what happens there? Don't we want to maintain a certain amount of control? And certainly, I agree that probably there are certain setup costs. And the fact that you're surveying this plot still requires you to put markers out in different places in order to evaluate that area, that small plot. But having said that, I would agree that maybe we limit the scope because for our purposes, that's really what we're interested in right now. We're not relinquishing control over any other possible use of land, and also hopefully this would cut down on the cost. That's just my thoughts.
Well, Megan, maybe there's some, maybe you're aware of some subtlety where if we did have the survey for everything, it might make it easier for us to advocate for future long-term changes.
I mean, I think also if we get it surveyed, depending on what funding we use, we don't necessarily have to share either. If we're, you know, depending if we use, you know, our more private funds or not. But I guess my question to all of you is, is there any time that we would need? Is there any part of our future plans that it would be useful to have that other part of the property surveyed? Is this something for the future that would be useful? And if not, then I think we're all, you know, I think everybody's exactly right that maybe we should just at least entertain, you know, what the cost difference would be to cut that piece of property out. But if we think at some point it's going to be useful to us in the long term, that's going to be a cost savings because we won't have to bring them back out and all that.
I have one comment, and it's not to answer Megan's question, I'm sorry, but how much have you explored the CPC funding? Because I'm kind of thinking that this is a perfect project for CPC. And especially with the survey, it may fall, if we do the whole survey, it may be more of a community project.
Yeah, so we've.
And they would pay for that, I would assume. They're looking for projects.
Yeah, so we've talked to CPC and we decided as a group that we thought it would be more advantageous for us to present a design plan to them and have them help us with the construction piece of it. So we are planning to go ask them for money, but just not in this phase. I don't know if it would be something that we'd want to ask them for money for each phase.
They really are looking for projects, so I would, I would talk to Russ and just see how he would advise us to approach the CPC. He's wonderful in telling, you know, helping guide you through the process. And if he says, no, no, you know, we've got too much going on, just go for the design, I would go for the design. But he may say, go for this. I know sometimes with that, it's better to ask for the huge, you know, the big money. And then whatever you don't use, you don't use. And it goes back into it.
And I imagine you're going to sequence that once we decide who we're going to use for the landscape planning. That individual or that company is going to want to have certain specific things they want delineated.
I think that the three that we spoke to just asked for, you know, a site survey. And none of them really specified if there was any, I don't know anything about site surveys, but none of them specified if there was anything kind of outside the norm that we should be aware of.
Carolyn?
What I would say about CPC, having just sat through their meeting on Monday, when I was there for Town Hall and the Conservation Committee, not, the Conservation Trust was presenting to ask for money, and they wanted detail. They wanted how much engineering studies were going to cost. They wanted to know everything. And I think that it gave me the impression that we would be best suited, and from other things in the past, coming up with our plan, coming up with our cost analysis and the amount of money that we can contribute. Because I think with many projects CPC likes to contribute but not fund the whole thing. And so if we can say, you know, we've got X amount to contribute and we were hoping that you can get us over the top, and here's all of our detailed analysis on how much it's going to cost, that would be my sense of what I think would be most successful with them, and that's just my opinion.
Okay, so then there's two major issues here. One, we want to, we want to investigate from Cavanaro. We want to take the question back to Cavanaro, can we sort of separate out this part of the lot to survey? And what would be the difference on the bottom line? And then secondly, how do we prioritize CPC versus other town funding? Well, actually, I missed a step. So, A, John Cavanaro, can we separate out these two plots to do survey? And we'll focus on, you know, just where we're putting our project. B, failing that, would Open Space Committee share with us? And then next step would be CPC, we have a design? And are we waiting until we get the design to go to CPC? Or yes, we have this, all this information, and then we're ready to present to them to contribute? Does that about sum it up?
Why don't I reach out to Russ? And I, because I think it was a good idea to chat with him so that we could get maybe an idea. He can guide us through the process. I think that's a great idea, and he can maybe give us a better idea of what a good strategy would be. I know he is excited about this project, so let me reach out to Russ and see what he thinks would be the best move when it comes to finding grant funds from them.
And in the meantime, do you want to find out from Cavanaro about whether we can sort of parse out just our part of the, just that part of the lot, right next to the building, and find out whether that would be a meaningful difference?
Right, because without any one of the landscape architects has, will need that. So we can't move forward with a design unless we have that. So in some shape or form, we need to know the answer to that as well.
And what I know from Cavanaro is that, you know, it is, I think, primarily built on hourly billing. So I would think that it might actually make a meaningful difference in the cost of the survey to, you know, substantially reduce the amount of area that you're surveying.
And he was also going to do an analysis of ownership along all the boundaries. And there's no question about the boundaries where we want to build, so that whole portion goes away.
Right. Good point.
In the meantime, so as not to stall the project for a month, like to, you know, we'd love to be able, you know, I think that it's good to get answers to these questions. Is there a way that we can approve going forward with these questions not yet answered, but hopefully answered in the next week? And so that we don't have to wait for a whole nother month to engage Cavanaro and get this started, and then have to wait for his survey before we can start with the landscape architect, and everything gets delayed.
Can we say?
Awesome, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
I was just going to say, is it possible for us just to have an email vote in between? We could say, we approve going ahead, asking him to reduce it to where we want to build the amphitheater. And that we could vote tonight, yes, we support that. And then if it turns out that it's not that significant or some other issues come up when Megan speaks with Russ, we could have, we could have another 10, you know, 15-minute Zoom or five-minute Zoom, whatever we need to do to meet.
Or even just an email, as you suggested.
Well, here's what I wonder about that. I think if we do, you know, if we start an email conversation, I'm not sure, no, sorry.
You're right, you're right. We can only do scheduling by email.
Yeah, I don't think that we could approve any kind of expenditure. So I would rather that we find out on as short a timetable as possible what the amount would be if we, you know, if we were able to separate it out, find out what that would cost, then maybe circulate that information to us. I think we can then convene a special meeting to just vote on, yes, approving Cavanaro. And it would be, you know, like you said, like a 15-minute Zoom to just address that. Because I think that if we're going to vote on something that is spending, you know, possibly up to $5,000, that probably would need to, that does need to be an open meeting and will have to be posted and so forth. So why don't we leave it that way? If everyone is amenable to possibly doing a quick special meeting to approve that, should we get an answer back within the next, you know, before our next meeting? Does that sound right? I see lots of heads nodding. Megan, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. I just, you know, as long as I, my only, the only thing that's stopping me from fully agreeing is, you know, are we going to have use for that land to be surveyed at some point? And maybe the answer is no, but, you know, we talk about parking, we talk about expanding the library. To bring him back out a few years from now, to just do that piece would be not a cost savings. It would be, you know, so if we're sure that we're not going to want that again, then fine.
That's true, but it just feels a bit speculative to me because I'm not sure that we really have a solid understanding of sort of, you know, of which town department has, can lay claim to that. And I mean, I don't know. I mean, maybe by getting the survey, then we are laying claim to it. But I'm not, I just, it's a little bit muddy.
But how does, you know, if it's all owned by the town, how does us having claim have anything to do with the survey? I mean, it's not going to say, the library has claimed to this park and RAC has claimed to this park. It's just all owned by the town.
Right. I think we were talking about survey document itself, is that?
I don't know. I just, it feels a bit speculative to me to, I mean, if he says it's not a meaningful difference, it's, you know, it's really sort of just, you know, should use a bad pun, part and parcel. But I think it's, you know, then that's one thing, that's a different conversation. But if he's saying, oh yeah, it'll only be half or, you know, 40% of the cost, then I think it gets a little bit difficult to justify when we have no plans to develop that at the moment. That would be a separate project.
Has every.
It's fine, go ahead, Mary Lou.
Are all the trustees here familiar with the exact piece you're talking about? I'm wondering if if it's worth having everybody just spend some time and go over there and take a look. I don't know. I don't know. I.
Some of us walked it, but some of us haven't.
Oh, you do know it. Okay, okay. And everybody else knows it, too?
We're just talking about the corner where Ripley and Sawyer meet. They're on the side of the building there.
Right.
Between the parking lot and where there's only emergency exit doors. There's that nice hill where we did the storytime and some programming last spring. But when the summertime came about, it worked very well in the temperate weather. But in the summertime, it became too hot because the sun beat down on everyone. So the hope would be to set something up in a way that people can sit comfortably and use the contours of the property, of the hill that's there, but add some shading of some.
Oh, I understand about the amphitheater that we're talking about, talking about the additional piece.
Oh, well, that's, the difference would be doing that small square versus doing the entire property, you know, down to the railroad tracks and, you know, over to the far side of the other parking lot.
All the way to the railroad.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what the engagement letter is for. It's for the entire piece of town property that the library sets upon.
The whole place where the kids play soccer, every.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
And all the way over to the other parking lot, you know, that it's the entire thing, which we don't really need right now. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that. I think based on what that whole description, that was a great question, Mary Lou. I think that maybe we could vote tonight on just doing that little parcel. I'm not sure doing the whole entire thing would make sense right now. I mean, it's a big piece.
Except we could hold on to it.
That's how I feel.
But so this survey would be more like investigating the elevations and all that, not necessarily ownership of just the, you know, what the land is, just the elevations.
Megan, if your gut thinks, from your experience as a library director, that there's value, symbolic value in us doing this, I don't understand it, but I don't have the background that you do. I'm willing to, as one, to support you if you really think that's important. My thought is just by the time we get to that, we'll have new constraints and new ideas that will require modifications of that. But if you can, if you think conceptually, that would be strategically useful, I'd support you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I, you know, I'll do whatever the board wants to do. I just think, you know, and I don't have any, you know, a back. and I don't have any, you know, background except for the renovation that I did in Randolph. But, you know, my, I'm just thinking that we have so many ideas and, you know, it just would be smart just for us. Let alone, you know, doing anything for the rest of the town, keeping that separate. You know, if we have all these ideas of expanding and needing a parking and, you know, all these things that we've talked about. I just, I would hate to have to double up on a cost, you know, in the future because we didn't, we only did a small piece now. And then, you know, five years from now, we have to do a small piece over here and a small piece over there. But, you know, if everyone wants to focus on this one space and, you know, that's, we want to be concerned with that type of cost savings, then I can certainly ask John to, to just do that one piece. I just think it's a little short sighted.
I'm wondering what the, oh, raise my hand. Mary Lou first and then Brooke. Let me have raised my hand officially.
Where does Rec stand on this?
Rec's excited about it, Mary Lou. On the, the space, oh, on the survey or on the outdoor space?
On the outdoors, not on our amphitheater, not on ours, but, but this new, this other part of it. That we're talking about, the additional part, which they use all the time.
Oh, us surveying that?
All we're talking about is a survey, not, not building anything on it.
Yeah, we're not building anything on their, what they perceive as their space.
Okay, okay.
Right now.
Right now. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, why don't we go and see what the, oh, sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, Brooke had a point to say something too.
Oh, sorry.
Say, what, what would the difference be between the time difference of doing the one spot, surveying the one area that we're looking at? And then surveying everything? And then what would the money difference be between doing the one and then all of it?
Well, that's what we don't, that's what we don't know. That's the inquiry that we have to make to Cavanaro.
Okay.
At least the money part. Okay, Sarah?
Well, I, I was going to say, why don't we take a vote and authorize Megan to go ahead with the best situation that she can deal with if, if Cavanaro says, you know, it's 5,000 pretty much for the whole thing. And it's like 4,200 for just the small block. Why would we wait? And then trust her to make the best decision for us.
I support that.
Hold on, I lost my video. I mean, couldn't we vote for like the big thing? And then if it's, well, I guess not, forget it. I'm lowering my hand. I, I feel a little sketchy about just saying, you know, Megan can just, I, I, we can't, that's not really a thing for us to vote on. Unfortunately, I, I, I have all the confidence in Megan to just make the right decision and to sort it out. But I, legally, I don't, I don't feel great about that, Sarah, as much as, as it is the most efficient solution and certainly reflects our confidence in Megan. I still think that we have to get the information and then if it's, you know, within the next week, two weeks, three weeks, we just have to, you know, quickly convene a special meeting and take a vote.
Okay.
I wanted to say too, before I, I forgot to mention that Megan Brinsey, unfortunately, again, can't get in because for whatever reason, her computer and this platform don't like each other. So she is listening on the phone. And so I just wanted to reflect that on the record. I did, and so if we do vote on anything, she's going to text me and I guess for the recording purposes, I can probably screen share if we feel that that's necessary, but and I asked her, I don't think she has any questions on this discussion, but I just wanted to mention that for the record.
Get someone from IT to help her with this? Megan?
She can come on down to the library and see Bridget. That's what Mary Lou did today and she's up and running and doing great. So yes, make an appointment with Bridget. She'd be happy to help you.
Can we get to, back to the issue at hand? So can we say that we would like to get some concrete answers to those questions that we just posed, essentially two questions? And can we try to convene at our earliest convenience at a special meeting so that we can then take a formal vote?
Yes, that's, that's would be my wish. And so I think if we're all in agreement, that's what we will do. So, I mean, just a quick show of hands. Does everybody agree that that's the right way to go? Okay. All right. So I think, you know, and, and Megan Brinsey agrees that that's the way to go. So, all right. So that's what we'll do. So Megan, if you would please get in touch with them and, and find out, you know, find out what, what the difference would be and you know, how, how, how and when they can do it and all of those things. And then, you know, let us know and we will post a meeting and take a vote if it's on short timing between now and the next meeting.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you. You, you have more?
I have a little bit more, but I think it's just fun stuff for the most part, so I can bruise through it. Oh, so we're, another revisit for us. So last meeting, we talked about and looked over the contract that the Historical Society had sent us. The board asked that I go back and flush out the liability piece with them, which I've been able to do. So in item six in the contract, the language was added, that's in, that's italicized right here, that they do have insurance up to $100,000 for the works and that they are not lending us anything that exceeds that limit of, of their insurance. So I was hoping we could vote to move forward with the contract brought forward.
I propose to go ahead. Second.
Uh, sorry, can you, do you mind stopping your share so I can see everyone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
That's okay. Thanks. All right. So, sorry, do we need a roll call on that?
We're just, if we show a hand, that work?
I think so. Every, all in favor of approving the agreement with the Historical Society?
You can say you saw all the hands and then
Yes. Unanimous agreement to, to approve the agreement with the Historical Society, hang up the artwork.
Great. And I'll be emailing you, Elaine, to help me place some of these items. That's where your talent lies, not, not as much mine. And the last thing on my report was just that we did our spring newsletter. Everyone should have had one in their, in their mailbox. And we, this, this time around, we were able to use some photography from a local resident photographer in, in Cohasset, Fran Wahlberg. And we hope to kind of keep that going because I think it was a nice community touch on the, the front cover. And that's it.
Great work.
It was great.
Thank you.
Really great work.
Super. Good programming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay. So we don't have Bronwyn with us. The bills are next.
I can talk.
So what do we?
Let me just pull them for myself so I can take a look. So this month. Excuse me.
Should we just take a look at her report?
Yes, I'm pulling up, sorry, I'm pulling up her report right now to see if there was anything that sticks out to me as, as different. Let's see, spent in March. Supplies, technology. So I'm just browsing. Majority of the money came out of our book budget, which was 8,000. Paid to Baker and Taylor, Midwest Tape, Ingram, Ebooks, Patriot Ledger. No, I don't see anything odd unless anybody had any questions. Looks like a lot of a database purchase from Ebsco and materials and usually Amazon is some supplies, which we, looks like we spent 89.33 on.
Carolyn?
Did have one question. I noticed, if I remember correctly, that the people counter, I think, charge was $840?
Yes.
Do we pay that much every month?
No, that's like just a yearly cost. And that's for three cameras. So we have to pay a certain amount per camera.
Thank you.
Should we just, did, did everybody look at, at, it was just a quick report that Bronwyn sent us, just saying that, you know, the expenditures matched the spending, sorry, expenditure report. Did everybody look at that and, and look through? Okay, it just, does everybody feel comfortable? Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the bills?
They're moved.
Second. Okay, we'll do a roll call for the bills. Steve Brown?
Yes.
Mary Lou Lawrence?
Yes.
Sarah Pease?
Yes.
Elaine Preslow?
Aye.
Brooke Jewell? You're muted.
Yes.
Catherine O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Carolyn Coffey?
Yes.
Catherine Harvey's? Yes. And Megan Brinsey says yes. Okay, so let's see, where does that bring us to? Is that my turn then? I'm after Bronwyn, right? Okay, so let's see, what do I have this month? I, well, the first thing I wanted to start with, I know we, we discussed this briefly last week, last month rather, in your absence, Catherine, but we're very sad to, to report that, that Catherine O'Callaghan is not running for reelection and is leaving us. And we thank you lavishly for your many years of service and support. So thank you, Catherine. And we're sorry to see you go. But we are, you know, happy for you, obviously, in your, in your next chapter. So that just leads me back to, it seems that we don't have anyone who has pulled papers for the vacancy. And so I just wanted to make another shout out to do some recruiting. Steve, I was going to come to you anyway because you did such an excellent job last year recruiting Brooke.
Thank you.
What I did was, I talked to a bunch of teachers to find out who that they remember that would be now late twenties, early thirties. And I used the, what I thought just personally would be useful is to get another younger person in their thirties with children ideally. And hopefully someone from a more diverse background than what we currently have. Here's a question. How, how many of us have a background, let's say, in English? How many in history? How many in politics? How many in some sort of science? I think it would be useful to have another person with a science technology background. I think it would be useful to have a young male perspective who is also a parent. And hopefully someone who hasn't come from a or doesn't currently enjoy a very comfortable lifestyle. So one suggestion I got, and this individual is being checked with, is I said, I gave them this information. I said, we've had a, an individual suddenly had to withdraw from running again. We only have three weeks. A person has to stand for election currently. They would be unchallenged, that responsibilities would be once a month, but the key goal would be to represent, if you will, a, a group that they, they were knowledgeable about in terms of the needs and opportunities to service them better. And so one person that came up was suggested in terms of his profile. He is in his late twenties, early thirties. As a father, he's running his own business, which is a construction business. I don't know whether he's had a college education or not, but if he didn't, I think that would be a valuable perspective to have. Because he would know more about what the needs are of our community that doesn't have college education. And I can't remember the statistics. I believe that Cohasset, 60% have a college education. Those numbers could be wrong. But a significant portion of us have not had college education. And so that was one person. Another person was, was a great fit, except, and even, whenever you happen to know Morgan McCarthy. Well, she's a microbiologist and currently in Copenhagen. So that's not going to work.
Oh, Morgan was in on our teen advisory board when I was the teen librarian in Cohasset.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that would have been
That would be an interesting.
So I would just encourage all of us to talk to people that have a lot of experience working with folks in the last 10 to 15 years, who would now be late twenties, early thirties. So I just thought I could open up the discussion with that, those sort of thoughts.
Those sound like, that sounds like a good start for sure. I think those are good guidelines. But I would just, you know, encourage everyone to, to dig deep and try to think of anyone you know. If you can try and think of one person to maybe just shoot a text to or just reach out and make contact and just let people know. Because oftentimes people don't know that there's a vacancy. And if you know anybody who might be interested in town government, you know, it's worth a try for sure.
And Carolyn? And just to note that if the, the papers have to be, you have to get the 50 signatures and submit them to Town Hall by March 28th. And to the extent that doesn't happen, it doesn't mean that we'll be short a trustee. You, we can recruit someone for a write-in. And/or they can be appointed by the select board for an unfilled seat after the, after the election, if, if need be. So, so not to panic. But yeah, there are other ways to go about it.
Yeah, I came in as a write-in after Carolyn called me and said, would you please?
That's why we asked you to be the, the, the chair. That was the penalty.
On another way, is, is there anyone on the Friends that might be interested in stepping up? I mean, it's not looking for Steve, Steve's diversity, but.
Yeah, I, I thought about that, Sarah. Thank you. I think that's a good suggestion. And it's something that I'll mention that the Friends has been very much in flux the last few months and is welcoming some new members. So I would say that's, that's a possibility that certainly I will, will reach out to them and see if there's anybody who would be interested in, in, in making the jump. That would be certainly a solid avenue. So the other thing that that brings me to is, so Catherine had very generously given a lot of time to the strategic plan and is still willing to do that. But obviously, you know, if, if one of us could possibly step forward and consider stepping into the role of spearheading or, you know, at least giving some significant support as she winds down, that probably would be a sensible transition to make. So this is the part where I ask who wants to step forward and work on the strategic.
Brooke, you should speak up.
Okay. Sure. Hey, Steve. No pressure, Brooke. Now I see how it works here.
Did you see all of us?
Group asks never work. You have, you have to corner the person.
That sounds, that sounds great. I would love to. I, I mean, I don't know about if I have enough experience with the trustees to like spearhead it, but I would be happy to be on that committee.
Well, it's a forward-looking document, so start there. And, and thank you so much. That, that will be great. And I'm sure. And, and thank you so much. That, that will be great. And I'm sure Catherine, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm sure you'd be willing to meet with Brooke and give her an idea. And of course, you'll work with Megan through the whole process as well.
Absolutely. In fact, I was spending some time today going through it, and one of the goals in the old one was really outdoor space. And I would encourage everybody to go back and relook at the goals that were set forth five years ago. It got me thinking about whether I was the right candidate to write this, because it really is the meat of the document, is what your goals are. And I would encourage everybody to really spend some time thinking about what you think the goals are, not today or tomorrow, but, you know, over the five years. And, and let's look ahead.
I would love to meet with you on Zoom more in person and talk about it.
Great.
Carolyn? Just as a reminder, like last time, the way we went through this process, we had, we interviewed fifty-plus people and got detailed feedback on lots of different questions. And there's lots of different ways to do it, but this is just how we did it last time. And then we got in a room, the library director and one or two staff members and three trustees. And we brainstormed things, yeah, we looked at kind of the feedback that we got from the surveys, and we brainstormed things that we could do to improve, you know, what, you know, where, what we could focus on and everything. And we had a big poster board with, you know, high to low impact and high to low cost. And we judged everything that we suggested based on their impact and their cost. So something like an amphitheater would be high impact and high cost. And, you know, that, that sort of thing. And then we, we looked at our quadrants and, you know, immediately targeted the low-impact, or high-impact, low-cost things. And then evaluated the, you know, high-impact, high-cost things and the, you know, discarded the high-cost, low-impact things and, and kind of evaluated everything. And, and used those suggestions to form that document. So, you know, just in terms of thinking about the process and, and the goals and everything else, I think the document is a great launching point. But, but now five years later, you know, there are probably some things that were on there that we now either don't think are realistic or, you know, maybe we achieved them. You know, we went and we bought all kinds of new furniture and made more collaborative spaces and that sort of thing. So, you know, it, it maybe our focus is going to be a little different, maybe our feedback that we get from people will be different, and they want us to do different things. So I just share that as kind of a way of thinking about how to go forward.
Okay. And then when you were mentioning that, like with the quadrants and figuring that out, you do that as a group, or?
It was the library director and, and two staff members that she suggested, and then three trustees.
Okay. What's the deadline?
So that's actually a good question, because I found a copy of the document, the original document, that said F, so it was FY twenty-seventeen through FY twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. So the end of FY twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two is July. But I also saw versions of the document, let's just say, twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-two, which would give us until January. So I, I need to look to see what was filed with the MBLC, and we'll, we'll go from there. So it's either due July first or January first.
I, I think we filed it in the fall. So I think we filed it in like September of, you know, five years ago. I, I actually thought it was six years ago, which is why I started this discussion last year. Because I, you know, I had in my head that, that, you know, it was up last fall. But if it
But regardless, I guess if it's July or the fall, we'd have to get that survey, right, to at least even develop the survey and get that out to people, like late spring.
Yeah, so the surveys, actually, it's been done, Brooke, and I'll share it with you. And I had a few of that, well, I presented it last meeting as part of the report, just as a link. And then I did have some feedback from some of the other trustees, so we can meet about that and see where we are and push that out. I'm really interested in getting as many non-library users as possible to answer the survey, because the library users are, there are users that come, there's already something at the library that's intriguing them to come. And our library cards are purged every three years if they're not used. So these are people who are actively using the library. So I really want to find out where the other fifty percent of the population is and how we can get them in and what it is that, you know, would draw them. So my overarching goal for the survey at least is to just try to get some responses from the, I don't want to say the library naysayers, but the, the non-active users.
Right.
Elaine, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, so I, I was just going to say that this is such a several-part process or endeavor. And so the survey, to me, as, as Brooke was just noting, I think that's kind of a no-brainer, where, a place to start, where we target collecting or approaching those people, maybe a discussion, you know, for, for those people who are going to be involved with disseminating the survey. And also, I think this time of year, now the weather's getting better, that's the kind of thing we can capture more easily and/or send electronically to people, you know, we do have an email list. But again, the people who subscribe to the library emails are already using the library, so that may not be. But we may post it in that mothers group, you know, area, or other places, you know, where we might find and capture those people. But I think the survey is easy for us to get together, do, get it out as soon as possible. And then the actual collaboration process of, well, what are those answers and places we need to improve or can improve? Realistically, you know, that can happen in conjunction, but also there's less time pressure for that, I think.
Right. Have we ever sent it to the whole town by mail, or is that just too, too much of an undertaking?
Expensive.
Expensive, yeah.
Um, yeah, it's too bad we could have like slapped a QR code on the mailing that just went out for people.
When is the next newsletter going out?
So it would be the beginning of the summer, so June. That's a little. But anyway.
They're only gonna work for a certain population, anyway. But, but you could put a link in Chris Senior's weekly letter, that will reach at least some portion of people, many of whom may not be library users.
I was gonna say the town website, but that sounds more targeted, Carolyn. Steve, what were you gonna say?
I'm just gonna say that as we sorry for the gong in the back. That's meditation time. A lot of the talk during meditation time. I apologize to the spirits that be. I was gonna suggest when we call, looking for people that might want to run in, for library trustee, we could also say we're interested in your thoughts about how the library could be improved. And if we're calling people that fit the profile that we had talked about earlier today, we might be getting more people that would meet Megan's profile. The other thing I didn't get a chance to finish, I was actually taking some data on the town and breaking it down by the value of the house. And sort of, sort of seeing how we could target a street or a group of streets. I don't know how you do this. Maybe you just ensure that people in those profiles are involved in the, in the questionnaire. What do people think? I'm grasping for ideas.
I mean, I think we probably are focused more on doing it electronically, which sort of makes the, the geographies, I think, an impulse that makes a lot of sense, but if we're gonna try and do it efficiently, I think we're, and avoid the expense of a mailing. That might make it tougher. I mean, I think also, like places like the one, the Cohasset one-four-three Facebook page and, you know, places like that are, are useful for trying to reach people who are wondering what's going on in town, but might not necessarily be library users. Catherine, you've got your hand up.
No, you raised that. I was just gonna say, the Facebook one-four-three, or going to other town sites, you know, and asking them to put it up on their social media.
Brooke?
I was gonna say, we could send it out through the schools, too. So at least every family gets, gets our, you know, gets our survey.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that gets us something on, on paper without the expense of mailing.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that is a great idea.
We'll email it, have the link.
And that, right, that's a group that you could clearly employ a QR code for.
Yeah, so.
You're talking about emailing them, not, not a-
Oh, were you emailing? I thought you meant like a backpack. So you can see, you can see how the generations change. Not, not that far removed, but we still did things on paper in the backpack.
You can actually have something that would be handed out at school, couldn't you?
You could.
You could. I think an email to everyone would be better, because I know, like, you know, my daughter went to school on Monday and I had forgotten to click all the papers out of the backpacks, like that. I mean, it happens. I hope it happens to other people. So it could get lost in the shuffle if it's a paper, but if it's an email and just says, like, click here, click on this link and fill out this very short survey.
With no open-ended responses.
With no open-ended responses.
Right, right. I always like the ones that are like, you know, one-minute survey or two-minute survey. And then at least it goes out to all the families from kindergarten to being, you know, to seniors. So that could be.
And I think, I think if we say, you know, please help us with our strategic plan, you know, not just a, how are we doing? You know what I'm saying?
Well, they do, the schools do a weekly, the newsletters, right, by email. Maybe they would link it in their, in the newsletter, in their newsletter.
Yeah, we can push it a few times. Like, I think the superintendent can push it, the principals, and then the PSL. So it could be going out three times, if they get on board with that, too.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And there, I know the superintendent, his goal this year, the board's goal is to really interact a lot with the community. They want to get involved in like different, different parts of the community. So this would be great, I think. I think they would like it.
Terrific. Okay, so all right, I think that leaves us in a good place on that. Thank you very much, Brooke. We appreciate it, for sure. And, you know, I would be happy to pitch in and support you in any way, you know, getting together for a meeting or taking a piece to, to do a write-up or, you know, whatever. We can, you know, obviously, we can pull together. And, and I'll pitch in. Okay, so next up is, is the Friends up next? You would think I would know the agenda by heart at this point, but I still have to look. No, CLT is next, and then the Friends. Okay, so Carolyn, that's you.
The, the CLT has not met since our last meeting. However, I do have something to report, which is the Development Committee of the CLT, which is Barb with me and Jen Anubene have thought that it would be a good idea to celebrate Bob Riley's fifteen years as the head of the Investment Advisory Committee. He has you know, been very generous with his time over the last fifteen years, and he is a little bit older. And we want to make sure that he knows that we appreciate him while he's around for us to tell him. So we would like to celebrate him and would like the trustees to come. It's, we're gonna do it, I think we're gonna do it at Barb Whiff's house on May twelfth, I think. Yes. Yes. And it'll be like a five-thirty to seven-thirty cocktails and hors d'oeuvres type of thing. So if you will, just pencil that into your calendars, that would be great. But we just, we just want Bob to feel feted. And we will, you know, Steve and Mary Lou, if there are people that you can think of who were involved in the past, that we want to make sure that we include, please, you know, shoot me an email and let me know. You know, obviously, we've got the, the current Investment Advisory Committee and, and the current set of trustees and, and, you know, some obvious folks like Jane Impatience. But, but if there are others, Michael Putzing or, you know, that sort of thing that, that I'm gonna need help coming up with, I'd love your, your input.
Rob Hobson.
That would be neat.
The CLT also is looking for committee members. So if anybody knows of anybody who you feel would serve well on this, they meet quarterly, so it's not a huge time commitment. But we are looking for outreach to people within the community who, you know, might not have a whole lot of time, but we want to connect them to the library. So you can shoot me an email and let me know if you think of anybody.
Great. All right. Thank you, Carolyn and Catherine. And so for the Friends, they met on Thursday. I actually missed the meeting, but from what I understand, the bylaws, the new bylaws are approved, which is great to have that done. And so the, the back forms that need to be filed with the, I can't remember if it was the Secretary of State of the DOR, but in any event, for our tax filing status will be filed now that the bylaws are intact, so that our legal piece is all tidied up. So we're happy about that. And additionally, oh, go ahead, Carolyn.
Do you think the trustees should review them and?
Review the bylaws?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't see the, I mean, they've been approved by the Friends. I don't think that there's a need for it. I mean, certainly, we can, I can bring a copy, we can, I can circulate a copy for the next meeting, and everybody can review and we can discuss, but I think it's, I think the ship has sailed. It's been, it's been voted on and approved. I don't think that there's a need for the trustees to approve it.
Yeah.
I think it just has to be voted by the, yeah, no, it's a, it's a good question, but I don't think that there is actually a need for the trustees to approve it. I think it's just sort of the board of the Friends. It's just really sort of their operating agreement when you get down to it. So we did, we did the Articles of Organization and the bylaws. So, and I, one of the things that we learned, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, is that the trustee liaison, it has to be a non-voting member. So I was barred from voting on it anyway, because there is a conflict, which I, I guess then just sort of underscores the fact that the trustees don't really have approving power over that document. So, so anyway, so that, that has been done. And more importantly, we will be in compliance with the state to retain our nonprofit tax filing status, which was the goal of the whole exercise. So and also now the bylaws more accurately reflect the way the board operates at this time. So I think it's a win. So, so that has been done. And the Friends also approved, was it two thousand dollars, Megan? To give, to, basically to create a small budget for Megan D. to use for sort of between age groups, because she was previously having to petition either Sharon or Kristin, right?
Bridget.
Sorry. In my head, they, Bridget, for a share, you know, for whatever, for, for funds to do something for that age group, which falls between children and teens. And so now she has a small budget to do some programming targeted at that age group, which I think is a great idea. So that was done. And then I have a photo. Maybe you've all already seen the new vending machine and the rearranging in the community room. So stop me if you've already seen it and you don't need to see a photo, but Barbara sent a picture to me because Barbara- sent a picture to me because Barbara and Megan on Monday sort of rearranged the book sale and pushed it down to where the coffee service used to be to make way for the new vending machines. And I think it looks great. Actually, I don't know if I can do a screen share, but I can. All right, hold on a sec. Let me pull up the photo. And I'm excited to go in and have a look because I have not seen it yet.
I was in charge of the drill and Barbara was in charge of making sure the books went back the way they're supposed to. So we were a great team.
Yeah, I love the teamwork. Let me see here. Okay. Desktop. See if I do this right. Yeah, this is a little bit complicated. I don't, I don't think I can do it actually. So I'll just email it around so that you can see. I'm sure you'll all be in the library within the next couple of days and see it, but I'll, I'll, I'll email you the photo after we're done. So I think that was about it.
The new vending machine's coming on Friday. So if you wait till Monday, you could see the whole wall in its glory with the new setup and the vending machine.
Bring your quarters.
And bring your quarters.
I mean, I, the coffee service was such a nice service that we offered to the patrons, but I have to say that the room looks much sort of tighter, tidier and more orderly without the, the table and, you know, because it was just sort of a bit of an awkward setup and the bulletins and everything that, you know, it was always, there was always a bit of a cluttery aspect to it. And now it's very tidy and orderly, which is great. So, so, so well done. Thank you for, for handling that. And I think that was about it for the Friends meeting. And so I think that pretty much covers our agenda unless anybody has any new business they would like to mention. Now? Carol, oh, sorry, I had, I opened the agenda and then I couldn't see. Okay, sorry, Carolyn, go ahead.
It's probably better that way. I, I just wanted to mention that we have continued, we, it was said before, we, we did talk to three people for the landscape architecture design, the most recent one, just being a couple of days ago. We wanted to make sure, you know, Amy Martin gave us a great proposal suggesting that she would do the work for, you know, up to $10,000 and anything after that would be pro bono. Chris Kennedy met with us, gave us a few ideas and was really more interested in green planting and that sort of thing than in hardscape design and shading and whatnot. So he's like, you know, I don't care if you don't use me. It's no problem. And we needed to talk to a third person by the municipal regulations. And we're given the name of Chris McFarland. Does anyone know him in town? He, he lives on Reservoir Road. He has a 14-year-old son who plays on basketball courts all the time, apparently. And he came over and met with us a couple of days ago and was lovely. His, he works for a firm, I believe in Boston, has done much larger scale landscape designs than, than what we are contemplating here, which maybe, you know, things like the Beijing Olympics and Atlantis in, in the Bahamas and whatnot. So, but he, he basically offered his services for free as a way of giving back to the town and suggested that he would be willing within a month to come back with three concept designs that we could discuss. And then he could try and price out so we can see, you know, realistically, you know, what we might be thinking about in terms of pricing and whatnot. So I, I wanted to bring that, you know, we kind of all thought Amy Martin was fantastic and she's so enthusiastic about the project. And, you know, we thought we were just checking the boxes, but now we have an offer for, you know, for no money to get some concept ideas. So I wanted to see what people thought about that.
What information did you give him about the previous discussions?
Well, I mean, I told him, we told him about kind of just the goals of the project and, and used to some of the probing questions that were asked of us that we came up with the answers to with regard to being flexible and accessible and community oriented and, and that sort of thing. And shared with him those, those thoughts, but I didn't tell him, I have a proposal from someone else for this amount of money or anything.
But did he see, for example, some of the, the layouts that we looked at?
No.
He, he doesn't need to.
Man.
Yeah, Carolyn, why wouldn't you want to wait for him? He sounds like, I mean, certainly, why wouldn't we wait for him?
I, I just, you know, I, I kind of agree. Like, it's manna from heaven. But, and what's the worst that happens? We, we, you know, either he doesn't deliver or it's way over the top or something like that. But, but I just want to, you know, I know people really liked Amy too. And so I just wanted to.
Have you seen his work? Have you seen his work?
He, he brought a portfolio. And like I said, but the projects he worked on were not comparable. I got his, his name was given to Catherine Harvey from Tracy Welsh, who I spoke with. She, he helped her, you know, they have kids the same age. They, she had a problem with her driveway and he helped her reconfigure her driveway so that it worked because it, there wasn't.
And it's lovely. I can, I can say it's beautiful. And, and I'm very familiar with the project. He did it at NDA, which is also is, is great. It's very subtle, but it yielded an incredible amount of usable space to the school.
He, he.
Not to wait.
I'm sorry, Carolyn?
He didn't do the NDA project. The NDA project was a, was a Boston-based firm.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, it was a Boston-based firm. And, and so, you know, we, we, we didn't want to go, yeah, we figured we would talk to local people, but he, Tracy had used him personally.
I see.
But the other thing, even within his massive, very grand projects, he was able to point out, you know, smaller areas within those bigger projects that, you know, one actually was an amphitheater or one was a beautiful, you know, sunken garden or, so, so he wasn't beyond being able to see what we would be working with. And Carolyn made it very clear what our diminutive budget might look like.
And he made it very clear that our diminutive budget might not get us what we're looking for. So we might need to be prepared to figure out ways of making it happen.
Steve, we could always say thank you very much if, if he doesn't work, but I think it would be wonderful to hear about his concepts and, and his ideas and what he can do. We know Amy's work.
So my, my thought was, you know, maybe we see what he comes up, we just put Amy on hold. And, and, you know, not say no, you know, because, you know, we, we love what she's done and everything, but, but just put her on hold and say, we have this fabulous offer from someone who lives in town who's, who wants to give back. And we feel like it's our fiduciary duty, you know, to
Listen.
To listen, exactly.
Yeah, great idea.
Does that seem appropriate? Steve, did you, you're on mute. I saw your lips moving.
Yeah, I muted because my brother was calling.
I didn't know if you were trying to talk to us.
Yeah, no, what, I'm not, my questions are not based about not using him or work. My question was, did he get the benefit of all the discussions that we had when we were together as a group of five? I'm sorry, I didn't know that you had this meeting. And so it would have been great if I could have been there. I wouldn't have to be asking these questions now.
No, no, it's fine. Like I said, I was, we thought we were just checking a box.
We're gonna have a committee, Carolyn. Let's have people participate in it. I can always turn it down, but I don't like being part of a group. And then I've missed two meetings now. So if you want to meet by yourself, fine. But be direct and say, we want only a group of three. But don't bring something where we're, where we're trying to make a decision and the people that have expressed interest in it are not involved. So I don't think that's appropriate. I hope it doesn't happen again.
Fair.
Do you understand?
I said, that's fair, Steve.
Okay, so you'll ask me the next time.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you.
So to follow up on your question, Steve, so what we talked to him about specifically was, we talked about the different types of spaces that we wanted. So we wanted a larger meeting space. And we talked about how we wanted a small group space and, and in.
Megan, we've lost your audio.
You froze, Megan. Uh-oh. Well, she must have had a pickup in her wifi.
Did we time out?
Yeah. No, I don't think so.
Does anybody want to pick up for where she was?
Oh, she's back.
Sorry. Um, that, you know, if we were, if, you know, everybody was sitting together that, that we could fit, you know, a larger amount of people, 100 plus, you know, with all the spaces together, but also have spaces that people can go out into. And he talked about too, you know, how awkward it can be for two people to try to sit in the amphitheater and have a meeting. And so he agreed that the ideas of spaces was good. And then we also laid out the importance of shade, which we talked about in our meeting in details as well. Just that, really, that's the number one priority. Because if there's shade, you know, people can bring their towels and sit if that's, you know, what we're left with, with our funding. But you know, we could have a beautiful amphitheater, but if there's no shade, nobody's gonna sit there because it's so warm in the winter and the, in the summer. I'm trying to think, we talked about, you know, possibly having some type of signage that came with it so that when you came down the road, you knew that it was, you know, kind of a piece of the library that was extended out into the outdoors. Is there anything else that I missed that we were, was like a hot topic for us? We kind of had a top three items that needed to be done. And it was shade and it was delineation of the space. And I guess it was having different spaces within the larger space.
The service of people more than 100 and less than 30?
Right, yes. Being able to accommodate those big, big groups that come to our awesome summer reading programs and the smaller groups as well. So.
That sounds good. And Carolyn, one other point, Brooke was also not invited to that meeting. And I would ask you to commit to invite Brooke at the next meeting.
Next time, we will have more time to post it with adequate time and make sure that everyone is there.
Yeah, you can schedule around that.
Yes, next time we will do that.
All right. Thank you.
So it sounds like we're all interested in hearing more from Chris McFarland. And, you know, as Mary Lou pointed out, why would we not? It sounds great and it sounds like a very exciting prospect. And I think that Carolyn, you summed it up just about right, that, you know, we just sort of not necessarily defer, but point out to Amy that we're, you know, as fiduciaries and responsible custodians of public resources that we of course are going to explore what we can, what we can do. And I'm sure she'll be supportive and maybe at some point this develops into a collaborative situation. Who knows? But I do, I don't know, do we need to vote on continuing to explore or have more conversations with Chris McFarland? Or we just sort of do it and see what develops?
I support that. Let's go ahead.
You want to vote on it, Steve?
No, no, I.
Oh, no, you're saying, let's go ahead and talk to him.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah, I think it can just sort of be an informal thing. It's sort of the next step.
I agree.
All right, very good. And I, I, it was on my list, Carolyn. Sorry, I should have come to you.
No, no worries.
During the director's report.
The, the only other thing is the fabric for the four chairs that would be recovered by the periodicals room has arrived. So if we want to bring, somehow get the chairs up there next week, the reupholsterer can start doing that. So I don't know if you want to check Megan with facilities and see if they'll do it, or I can stick, you know, stick them in the back of my car and make a few trips.
Yeah, one or the other. And I could put some in the back of my car maybe too. My husband has a truck that we could utilize if, if need be. What, if, if you could just email me the address or remind me of the location that they need to go to. I will get that done next week, Monday.
You know where 3A Pizza is up like?
Oh, yes.
It's right next to it.
Oh, we're the perfect place.
Before Good Sport, between the mobile station and Good Sport.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I can, I can manage that one.
Or next, next to Good Sport. Must be next to Good Sport.
Okay. I'll find it in there.
Great. Well, that's exciting that that's it. Do you know how long, what their lead time is, Carolyn?
Uh, how long it'll take them? No, I don't. I think a couple of weeks, but I'm not sure.
Great. Oh, that's exciting. Another nice addition. Okay, anything else?
Good job.
Thank you. And good job, Megan. It's the only time I see Mary Lou outside the library. All right, very good. Well, thank you, everybody. I guess if we are all done, then we will adjourn. Do we need, so do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you next month or maybe before, if we have something to report.